All right, we'll call the city council regular meeting agenda from Monday, April the 14th, 2025 to order at 6:39 PM. If you would all please rise, join us, I'm gonna lead us in a invocation followed by our pledges by council member Chavaria.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come and thank you first and foremost for giving us today, giving us the ability and the opportunity to come into your city hall in your city and do what we need to do for the business of this city. As this council meeting unfolds and we make decisions, I pray, Father, that with each member of this council that we can make decisions that are in the best interest of our whole city as well as that are pleasing to you. Father, as always, when we gather, we wanna lift up and make sure that we pray for our first responders as they put themselves out into our community each and every day, hour by hour, and in some cases, put themselves into harm's way. So I just ask you, Father, that even tonight, the days and weeks and the years to come, that each day, each shift, that those folks get to go home safely, and we ask for your protection with them. Again, Father, I just ask that you order our business tonight, that we will be mindful of you, that we will be pleasing to you in your eyes and your mind, and that we will give you all glory and praise today. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you for that. Looks like we've got a group of scouts here tonight, so it's a great-looking group. What troop are they with? 468, couldn't see the number. Very good. Thank y'all for coming out today, and hopefully we have some interesting conversation around this table, and you'll get a lot out of it. With that, we'll move forward in our agenda. Roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify, we have a quorum present, as all members are present accounted for with the exception of Mr. Tooman, who will be absent from the chamber of the rest of the evening. Next up, we have a recognition and award presentation of the Transparency Trailblazer Award by the State of Texas, Comptroller of Public Accounts. I'm gonna ask our city secretary's office to... team manager to meet me up front to receive this award, but it goes to the transparency of our city. There's certain level, this is the...
Fifth?
Yeah. The fifth star in the award process, and as I understand, we are the eighth city in the state of Texas to achieve this. So, again, if you put it with some of the other accolades that we've had throughout our different departments, probably the only city that has some of the awards that we received. So Trent's gonna meet me down here. In fact, I'm gonna read, this is a letter from Glenn Hager, our comptroller of the state of Texas. "I am proud to recognize your organization as a transparency trailblazer. This designation honors local governments that have achieved all possible transparency stars, including, in this package is your award and a copy of yesterday's award program. Fewer than 20 local governments have reached the pinnacle of the transparency stars program." Again, we found out number eight to do so. "A program that stands alone in establishing a national standard for financial transparency and accountability. Your distinguished trailblazer status sets a high bar for your community, the state of Texas, and beyond." So Trent, congratulations on your staff achieving this. I don't know if you wanna say a few words about that, and then we'll take a picture.
So, thank you, Mayor, and it is exciting to be one of only eight cities to have achieved this thus far. And, you know, I owe it all to our staff that does our financial reporting, that does our open records, open government, and it's important to have transparency within government and that those things are reported accurately and open and easy for the public to understand. So I don't, you know, take any credit myself, it's all our staff that does these things on a day-to-day basis, an annual basis, that I credit for making sure that we are open and transparent. So thank you.
All right. Citizens comments, this is a general comment or is it on a specific? General comment, okay. Citizens comments, we have one that signed up to speak tonight. Mayor Proton will call you out and ask you to go to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, just one, is it Mr. Connor Brody? Brady? Brady. Your handwriting is as good as mine. Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the purpose of the record and limit your comments to three minutes, thank you for being here.
Let's be right here. I'm here to talk to you today, I'm here to talk to you today about the spaghetti dinner ticket that our troop... I'm here to talk to you today about the spaghetti dinner that our troop proudly hosts each year. This is something that a troop, as a troop, we all look forward to. First, I'd like to highlight that all the money that we earn goes straight back into our troop to fund all the adventures that we do throughout the year. We give back to the community by... What's it called? I know, we help with the pumpkin patch, we do some service, we clean up Nap Road every year, and... This dinner is just $10 per version. In addition to the meal, we hold a silent auction with a variety of great items. It's a fun way to get involved and potentially take something home. It is hosted 4:00 to 8:00 PM, Saturday, April 22nd, 26th, at St. Andrews Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Can you give us your name and address and tell us where we can get tickets? I already have mine, but in case others don't.
7736 Lester Street.
Perfect.
From Scouts.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Is that the only speaker? All right, we'll move forward in our agenda, we'll move to the consent agenda. Mr. Coza, if you'll put that on the table, it's items A through J with the exception of, this is what I received, C, E, F, J, and I.
Certainly, Mayor, consideration of possible action on consent agenda items A through J with the exception of C, E, F, J, and I. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Garbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, one item that we did pull, item I, staff has asked to move that to the 428 agenda, so we won't take that up tonight, but we'll move that to the next agenda. So with that being said, Ms. Chavaria, would you put item C on the table, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2025-48, so move.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an inter-local agreement with the Pearland Independent School District, and it's for the use of the fields at what we call the Veterans Sports Complex, so these are the softball fields behind the recreation center and naderarium. We've had a longstanding 10-plus-year relationship with the school district and been in an inter-local agreement with them throughout that time, and that's coming to expiration, so this continues that relationship and continues to have those fields within our inventory of fields for tournaments moving forward. So you happy to answer any questions?
Did you pull this? I did, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This, Frank, can you tell me what the cost to maintain these fields are? I didn't see it in the information we received.
Let's see if Carrie or Kevin's got some information.
I don't know the exact cost off the top of my head right now to maintain those fields, but we did take, not too long ago, when we were doing the strategic athletic operational study, we did take a look at the cost recovery of those, and those fields are meeting cost recovery, they're right at cost recovery.
So I guess the question then I had was how often, in this summer, it said something about a school has the first right of refusal or two weeks to give you heads up? How often do they use these fields?
Very, very little. I think in the history of this agreement, they maybe used it 15, 20 times.
That's really the, I guess my point was, I wanted to see, make sure we weren't subsidizing the school for using those fields and maintaining them. That's really the main point I had. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Sounds good. We'll move to item E as an echo. Mr. Byron, would you present that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, consideration of possible action, resolution number R2025-51, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this item is for a grant through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, for a victim's assistance grant, and we utilize those funds, they fund about one and a half of our two full-time employees in the Pearland Police Department that provide victims of crime services. So we've applied for this and got this for many years running, and so we're just applying for it again to continue to cover those costs through the grant. Thank you.
I did, thank you, Mayor. So Trent, on this question I had was, I was looking in the package, you guys don't give any status or statistics on how many people they've helped. What happens, what's the backup plan if we don't get the grant? As we know in this budget, I guess Doge is coming out, and what if they decide we're gonna cut this funding, are we gonna be able to keep these officers, or do we cut these officers? There was nothing mentioned about this.
So I'll let the chief, you know, respond in detail, but my understanding is that we do have a requirement under the law to provide these services, so we would have to find another way to fund these if we were to move forward, or if we were to not get the grant. So anything to add, Chief?
That's correct. It is required by law. It used to be done by a police officer.
And these are citizen employees, they're not officers.
Right, this is professional staff, they're not officers. And I can get you all the stats you need, we can send some of that over.
Okay, thank you, Chief. That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, moving on to item F, Ms. Cade, would you present it, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R2025-52, so moved.
I get... We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is for a letter of financing agreement between the city and the Lower Kirby Pearland Management District, and it's associated with the Hooper South and Frugee West Road improvements. So those are improvements we already have in, we already have agreement in place with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to fund those improvements. Those monies pass from the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to the city to do the project, and then the city has a reimbursement agreement with the management district, so as additional value goes in the ground within the district, the district is able to reimburse the city for those expenditures, and then we'll pass those reimbursements back to the Pearland Economic Development Corporation. So this is kinda just the last piece to put in place before we start moving forward with the design and the construction process, or projects, so that we can put these improvements on the ground.
I did, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll beat you to it, I apologize. Trent, just a real quick question on this, is $5.8 million was the cost, and we're funding 100% of it and waiting for the 100% reimbursement, or is there a management district putting any money in?
So I believe on this one, the Pearland Economic Development Corporation's funding 100% of it, and then we'll get 100% reimbursed.
Do we have a timeline?
On the project or reimbursement?
Both.
Is Matt...
He was.
There he is, I'll let Matt provide the details.
And we, Mayor and Council, we will probably start design this year, so I would say construction wouldn't start for probably two years, year and a half. And there is a slight possibility, the district next year, it's a year-to-year thing for how much bonds they could issue, there could be a possibility, they could issue some of the funding, but we won't know that until they get their FYI 26 taxes and to know whether they'll be able to fund some of it, but more than likely, we'll fund most of it.
So 2028, you'd expect it to be completed.
Yeah, I would hope so, maybe sooner, but yeah. There's a lot of right-of-way, we're gonna acquire some right-of-way to fit this road in and stuff, and that'll have to be determined and negotiated, so that'll take a little bit more time.
Is there right-of-way cost in here? Because I didn't see that.
Yeah, that's the third on the...
Okay, thank you, Matt. That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Byron?
Just to follow up on the second part of your question on the timeline for getting the $5 million back, is that five years, 10 years, that kinda open-ended?
You know, it's always, we're a developer in the district, and so it'll all depend on taxable value of the district of when we get paid back.
Thank you, sir.
Quicker we get things on the ground, the quicker we get paid back, so. Last call for questions, don't see any. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, Mr. Patel, if you'll put item J on the table, please.
Yes, sir. Consider impossible action, resolution number R2025-46, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a purchase of bunker gear for our fire department, so that's the protective gear they wear when they go into fires and other situations. We replace a certain number of those each year based on a rotation. Each person has two sets of bunker gears, and they have a life, so we replace a significant number of those each year. This includes, I think, about 60 replacements, plus it also includes ones that have been damaged beyond repair, and then also includes some for some of our newer personnel. So with that, we recommend moving forward. Thank you.
Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess what dragged me on this one was that, it's from Byboard, so is the company that's selling this here, I think it was, I forgot, FirePro, are they here?
Fire Apparatus.
MetroFire, sorry. Is anybody here for MetroFire?
I don't, doesn't look like there are. I know for cooperative purchases, we don't have a requirement for...
Okay, well, again, you can, maybe you can explain this to me, maybe the chief can, because when I went through, and I was, again, same thing as number I that you guys pulled and said you guys will come back with us, the cost was almost $4,000 for a pair, and when I went online, and again, and that's, I'm dumb on this, so this is not my expertise, but, you know, I found several websites that actually looked official to me, and the costs were literally like $2,400, half the cost what we're paying today, and it's just mind-boggling to me, why are we paying so much? I was hoping that the vendor would be here to explain why are they charging us twice the amount. Matter of fact, on their own website, they had cheaper... Matter of fact, on their own website, they had cheaper, um.
So is that the same garments, the same specifications?
Very, very true, uh, because they didn't provide that on the, uh, invoice, or the, the quote. They just kinda gave you a brief description of what they're quoting. But on their own website, the materials, obviously, if they're selling for fire safety, I would hope that it's, you know, somewhat, um, similar to what they're selling to us. I, I hope they're not selling something really cheap on their website and doubling the cost to us, so.
So Chief Burt's here, so maybe he can answer some of the questions around the specifications and the different types of bunker gear, and why through our bunker, or one of our committees within the fire department, they've chosen this particular, uh, this particular specification.
So when you're looking at bunker gear, and we go to spec it, which we go back and review our spec at least every year, if not every other year, it's kinda like buying a car. So what you probably saw was that company is gonna sell three different levels of gear, and then within those, there's different specs, just like if you would spec on a car. So there's wildland gear, which is the cheapest, cause it's only a single layer. It doesn't have a lot of requirements. Then there's rescue gear, which is kind of in the middle, and then there's structural firefighting gear. So structural firefighting gear is, um, very specific on what it has to have. And so we go down, and the gear that we're buying right now is Aeroflex from Fire Decks. And it's kind of about, if you wanted to go with like buying a car, we're buying a GMC car with Cadillac specs on it. So we go down, there's about sixty-one to eighty line items that we go through to make sure this gear is exactly what we want, and is the best performing for the city based on the climate, based on our structures, based on fire history we have, based on the staffing we have. All that stuff goes into specking gear. So we don't have the highest, but we've got some very good state-of-the-art equipment that's probably best for our people for this area and what we deal with every day.
So Chief, you guys go through Buy Board, correct? And this is a preferred Buy Board?
So we go through Buy Board, and the reason it is, is usually, so Buy Board's kind of like the high-end, and then we go and negotiate after we get done playing with Buy Board. So we go to Buy Board, and we say, okay, what are you guys selling this for? And then we kinda play the market, and we play our specs, and we get it down from there.
So are there, are there vendors we can compare this bid to or quote to that you guys got?
So if we were not to buy this spec off Buy Board, we'd be paying about fifty-six, fifty-seven hundred dollars a set. We're getting it for three, thirty-nine ninety. Um, but there's other vendors, just like buying cars. You can buy Toyota, you can buy Chevy, you can buy Ford. There's other vendors, there's probably ten or twelve, and we talked to a lot of them last week at a conference we were at. Some are much better, some are much worse. And so depending on the materials you buy, depending on supply, depending on where the stuff comes from, it all goes in, it all kinda goes into our decision to make it. One of the reasons we went to this company is all three layers of the bunker gear that we're buying is sourced and made in the United States. The last set we had, which was much more expensive than what we got, had some fabrics that were coming from overseas, so we were having supply issues. So we play with them a lot when we go to do our specs, and we go do our bid and our risk assessment for the gear we want. Then we come in. So I would say, if you wanted to say, we're probably at about a GMC with Cadillac specs.
Yeah, that's great, Chief. I guess the question I have is, I guess, do we really get bids out there to really see if we're getting the best price, right? Like, I understand what you're saying, that the specs are. I guess you didn't take those specs and go out there and kinda see if there's another vendor who's willing to meet those specs.
So we have gone to, we have gone to other vendors and to other manufacturers to see what they have to get close to what we want. And we're right at about the middle of the road. Um, and this company is a lot better when it comes to service and it comes to backing up their product than some of the other ones. So there was one cheaper that I know of, but it was only by three hundred bucks. But it was gonna be forever to get the stuff in, and I've had history with them in the way past that they just are not somebody that stands behind their product very well.
Yeah, I guess, um.
The other thing that we do is, we talk to all the departments around here. We all know what each other, where, we all know the prices we're getting. So we're able to actually hold the vendors and the manufacturers to the market pretty well.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not big sold on this whole Buy Board, right? Because of what's, what's happened in the past down here. Um, again, with vehicles and everything, I just don't know enough about Buy Boards. I feel like you guys tell us one thing, and then, you know, it seems like it's completely something different. So to me, you guys didn't include any of the specs, so you couldn't really see. And, and the, the material you guys gave us, I, I didn't see the detailed specs. So maybe I missed it. If I did, I apologize. Uh, it just gave a blank, kind of a very generic description of what they're selling, even because that, the item number, you couldn't pull it up on their own website. So, you know, to me, it just seemed like, I mean, it's just a very expensive, it's four thousand dollars a unit. Again, maybe it's a fair price, like you said, and you know it more than I do, but just from the, um, I guess for me to know, get a grasp on whether taxpayers' dollars are really being spent correctly, I don't get that feeling, but thank you.
So, uh, Chief, real quick, is this the same type of gear that, uh, Eddie was wearing when he was injured about a year and a half ago?
No, it wasn't.
Is this better?
That was one of the things that we looked at with this stuff. So Eddie, when he was, he was wearing our old brand and our own stuff, and the guy that was right next to him in the same amount of fire, Eddie came out with third-degree burns over thirty percent of his body. The other guy had a dime-sized burn on his elbow.
And, and, and he was wearing this versus?
He's wearing this stuff.
What Eddie was wearing. Yeah, and I think that's, that's part of it. Good, good comment on making sure that we're shopping and getting the best price. But at the same time, I think we have to be careful what we're looking out, out there, cause, uh, it, it's, it's the, it's the level of protection, uh, on each one of these firefighters as they go in. And for our scouts in here, we're talking about bunker gear, so you don't know what that is. It's just a funny name, bunker gear. What are you wearing a bunker for, you know? So when you see a firefighter out there in helmet, mask, uh, everything on, that, that huge coat, pants, boots, all that kinda stuff, all of that gear, that, that, uh, that coat and pants, that's known as bunker gear. So when a firefighter, uh, hits the truck on the way, they're, you know, they're getting dressed and ready to go. Um, that's what we're talking about. It's the protective equipment, uh, that they put on to go and fight a fire. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what this discussion was talking about. And we're buying, uh, in this proposal, eighty sets of that. So not just one or two, but eighty different sets of that. Open it up to questions or comments?
Mayor, go ahead, go ahead, Justin.
Who's here from finance? That be you, Victor?
There's several of us here.
So we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna be turning in our, our paperwork accordingly to the Buy Board requirements, right?
That's correct.
If we do end up purchasing this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Why do we use Buy Board if you have to, um, haggle with them? What, what is the purpose?
You don't have to haggle with them. They did.
So they go through the process of meeting all the, the state required, uh, bidding laws. So they satisfy that without us having to, uh, do that on every single, you know, purchase we make, uh, going through the invitation for bids, um, process. So they have already bid in accordance with all state laws. Um, so there are items, um, where they establish a price, but you still have, they do what they call multi-awards. So you still have the ability to go back and compare one manufacturer against the other and negotiate those prices and, and try to negotiate the best price you can. As well, you can look at, we can look at multiple, um, cooperative purchasing arrangements. I know on, on this one in particular, we also looked at HGHC, um, and I believe they provided a much higher quote on there. So we went Buy Board and then negotiated from there. You can, you know, there, you can negotiate based on quantities you're buying for other, other issues as well, as far as service and different things like that, that you get out of the different, uh, vendors, so.
I, I would like to see how much these are on their website, but I can't even find them on their website.
I mean, they may not have certain pieces on their website. These are probably not available to the public. It's not something you can call and probably order one to send to your house. Uh, maybe you can. I don't know. Uh, I think, I think what this begs, is talking about Buy Board, talking about cooperative purchasing and everything else, I think from this point forward, I don't care if the packet is two thousand pages thick, put the entire packet that comes into finance, I don't care if it's ten quotes or two quotes, put the entire thing in there, so we don't have this question come up every single time that we have, um, a Buy Board question. Um, I mean, when we bid out a road project, we've got four contractors, we put all their numbers in there. So let's just put it in there, so there's not a question as to why we're offering, you know, to purchase one versus the other. You can see it. Uh, and if there's a difference, uh, as Chief Burt said, of fifty-six hundred dollars down to thirty-nine ninety, or four thousand dollars, we can see it. Instead of taking our word for it, we can, we can see it. And, and I think that's important. And, and again, if the packet is two thousand pages thick, because of that, make it two thousand pages. Um, then we don't have to worry about it, and you can see it.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, first of all, Mayor, thank you for that. That's, uh. Chief, by no means am I trying to tell you to go buy the cheapest product for your team. That is not my point here, right? My point is just trying to make sure, with this Buy Board experience I've seen in my short tender here, it just feels like sometimes we're not given all the information, and that's my point. And so, again, I'm not questioning whether the specs are right or wrong, or if we can go to lower spec. That is not my point, so please know that. Thank you.
I'm in no way questioning your integrity or what you did here. I hope you know that. And I don't want you to get cheap stuff either. I want you to have the best stuff, but I just, I'm curious about the prices. Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad we got that on the record, uh, cause again, I, I, I think our, I think our departments do a great job in making sure that our taxpayer funds are used wisely. Uh, so Chief Burt, thank you for that. Uh, last call for questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
No.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavilla?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Motion passes four to two.
We don't want our firefighters to be safe. All right. Moving on, matters removed from extended agenda. We've already taken that up. And remember, item I, as in igloo, is moving to April the twenty-eighth. Uh, public hearing number one, uh, staff, who's doing them tonight? Martin's here. All right. Martin, read that into the record as to what the public hearing is over and move right into your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight's first public hearing, this is a request by Carlos Sainz's applicant on behalf of Armando Alonso owner for approval of a zone change for two point seven seven six one acres of land from Cullen Mixed Use District to General Commercial District. Uh, this property is generally located at eighty-four oh-two and eighty-four twenty-two McCard Road. So getting into the summary of the request, uh, this was, uh, the applicant originally requested for the general commercial zoning district, uh, to allow for the existing building to remain as office warehouse and to further develop the site with office warehouse uses. Uh, at the Planning and Zoning Commission's first, uh, meeting, they postponed, uh, the request after some discussion to, uh, after some discussion at the February seventeenth meeting, uh, to allow the applicant some time to discuss the request with staff. Uh, the applicant and staff met on March fourth, uh, to discuss, uh, their plans and, uh, some iterations of the site plan. Uh, furthering the conversation, the applicant identified that his main goal was to build the event center, uh, ballroom or reception hall for weddings and similar events. Uh, other uses of the property included a restaurant and, uh, changing the use of the current warehouse uh, to a music recording studio or music production and promotion office. Uh, all of that was, uh, packaged back up and delivered back to the Planning and Zoning Commission on their March twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, at that meeting, PNC approved a lesser zoning classification, uh, the Neighborhood Services District, uh, and made that their official recommendation. So taking a look at the public comment, uh, we had one, uh, written against, and then one person in support, uh, at the PNC meeting. And then, uh, wanted to provide this, a quick table here, uh, showing the variety of uses uh, and all of the, uh, different zoning districts that, uh, could possibly fulfill, uh, the desires for getting, uh, additional development on this property. Uh, here you can see in the Cullen Mixed Use column, this is the existing zoning, uh, the general commercial, which is the original request, uh, and what is proposed, uh, is this, uh, column. And you've got general business, and then the Neighborhood Services, which is what the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, ended up recommending, uh, which has, uh, you know, these allowances for the event center, restaurant, music studio, office, and office warehouse. And again, more than happy to bounce back to that table during discussions afterwards. Taking a look at the zoning and surrounding uses, uh, you've got, uh, large lot residences, uh, equipment rental, park, and undeveloped land, uh, surrounding the property within primarily the Cullen Mixed Use districts, uh, but then you also have the Lake Park Planned Unit Development just to the north, which has a base zoning of a general business and office professional, uh, and a little bit of a unique planned development. So taking a look at, uh, the future land use map, uh, this area is identified as Mixed Use Center. Uh, and here you can see the Mixed Use Center on the right-hand side of the screen. And then in staff's analysis, the requested general commercial district is not consensus, not consistent with the Mixed Use Center, uh, of the comprehensive plan. Uh, lesser zoning districts such as general business or neighborhood services may be more consistent with this place type uh, and the zoning of the adjacent properties. Uh, with that, staff recommended, uh, or was not strongly opposed to, uh, the general commercial district, but was unable to recommend full approval. Uh, and then after, uh, the back and forth with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, again, they did recommend that Neighborhood Services District, uh, through a six to zero vote. Thus recommending that. So with the, uh, recommendation not following the request, I just wanted to lay this out very simply. If council chooses to recommend the Neighborhood Services District, it's a simple majority that's required, uh, for approval. If council chooses to go with a lesser district, uh, but not, uh, what was requested, uh, then that would be a supermajority, uh, either for the general commercial or general business zoning district. With all of that said, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right. Is Mr. Sines here? Ah, there you go. Okay. Uh, are you here to give a presentation or just answer questions? Okay. Uh, now's your time for presentations. So if you'll go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Uh, you can go into your presentation, and then certainly when we get to question and answer period, we may call on you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Uh, yes, my name is Armando Lozano. I'm the, uh, property owner of eighty-four oh-two and eighty-four twenty-two McCard Road. In the eighty-four twenty-two, I have, uh, existing building that is now under a lease for electrical companies being used as a office warehouse. And, um, and the other one, eighty-four twenty-two, that's where I have a, a mobile home. So in my first meeting with PNC, I made an application to request, uh, GC, GC Zone. And I was basing, uh, this on the, uh, properties next to my, uh, the building next to my property, and, uh, Mr. Greggs, if you'd like to show some of the pictures, uh, a- as you can see, that's the existing building to, to the right, and to the left is a mobile home. And, um, to the right of, of my existing building, there is a metal, uh, plumbing shop. I figure that's under GC. And then if I can see the other picture to show the west, uh, the east side, I'm sorry, the east side of my properties, there's a, uh, boat shop. So.
Not mine, by the way. Just wanna make that very clear.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I'm trying to learn, I mean, I'm not a professional speaker. I'm not a.
You're good.
Business, just a owner of the property that lives in Pearland since two thousand and four, and I do business with, as a, as an electric contractor, I do business with City of Pearland almost every day. And, um, I'm gonna try to do my best. Uh, the first meeting went very well with the PNC, um, but at the end, they couldn't come up with an agreement with, uh, GC. an agreement with GC. And the concern was building more warehouses. So I understood that and I, I talked to the planning department and I let them know that I have no intentions of building any warehouses. The only reason is because of the existing warehouse that I have. And they recommended me to review the GB zone. And, and I did. And pretty much there was a lot of similar things in between the two, except with the warehouses. So that's when I said, I'm fine with it. So at that, then we came back because the meeting was postponed. So we came back on the second one and honestly, I didn't feel that I needed to do anything because that's what they were recommending. And I was even asked that if the GB zone was approved, that I was going to remove the mobile home. And of course, that's my plan. When I bought the property, I didn't want the mobile home. So I don't know exactly what happened on the second meeting that one of the members came up with NS zone. And one of the members asked me if I, if I would be satisfied with that. Honestly, I had no idea what that was. I'm not into this much. So he says, well, we're going to make an amendment and you still have an opportunity to review it with the planning department. So I'm here just to see if I can be considered for the GB zone and I already have proposals from an architect and an engineer for, for a site plan, but I just, honestly, I, I, this is going to cost me like $20,000 and I would like to go step by step and hopefully, you know, I can be considered for the GB zone. Thank you so much. I'm open for questions.
Very good. We have to go through the, the actual public hearing side of things, but then we get into questions and comments from council. We may have you back for some, some, some answers.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you for that. Next up is wishing to hear from anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, not going back in the order, anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll turn it over to questions and comments from council. Real quick, Martin, before we do, there was a graphic that showed what's allowed, what a CUP is required for the diff, three different zoning classifications. Be interesting to put that back up if you would. I'll open it up for questions and comments from council. Cheverie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a question. I think it's recommended under NS, but under NS, office warehouse is not permitted. So I'm kind of questioning, why is that even a recommendation?
So that came through the applicant's original request. Their original request was to develop an additional building on the site. Going back to the aerial here, you can see this, this is the existing warehouse. There, the original discussion was to have a second office warehouse building. And the only way to get a second office warehouse building was to go to the general commercial district where that office professional would be allowed by right.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant wants a GB, not a GC, correct? Okay. And I, Martin, can you explain why they proposed the NS? Like, I didn't understand it. What was the purpose of it?
The NS was seen as just a lesser district. There was concerns about the amount of office warehouse that could be constructed and in addition, there, they saw the NS as allowing for further review of conditional use permits for, they, they were real interested in what was going to go on on the site.
Well, I mean, I guess my point is he can't build a office warehouse, right? And that under GB.
Correct.
Oh, and that corner, can, can we pull up that corner on Cullen and because, I mean, do you have a full map on that? We can go on Google map and pull it up. Yeah, I mean, I, when I look, can we look at all four corners, please? So I, I drive by that corner all the time and I don't see the point of not allowing him to build a restaurant or, you know, what the other use are. I mean, it, it's a pretty high traffic area. I mean, I don't see any residential there. I don't understand why this whole, I guess we were just going through this UDC rewrite and talking about making things simpler. This seems like we're making it more complicated.
Agreed.
I, I, I don't get that. Sorry, but I'm, I'm in favor of the GB.
Thank you. Martin or Vance, for just kind of understanding of cost to, to do this process. If this Mr. Lozano was to get GB or GC, we have an $850 cost for a zone change, correct? Okay, and then we have a $25 for each type of zoning request. Is that correct? Okay, so are, is it my understanding that we've got two, three different things here? So being at a $50, $75 to do the, for, for the cost of getting a zone change for this request?
So he only requested one zone, zoning district.
Okay, so the other ones are by right, so it's 850 bucks. Okay, so moving forward, to, to go through the kind of common sense aspect of it, to kind of talk to Member Patel's comments there. To do a CUP, $1,000 each time you want one, correct?
Give or take, yes.
Okay, so depending on how many CUPs that will be required by Mr. Lozano, if it's depending on which zoning we end up with here, but if we were to take PNC's recommendation, restaurants, a CUP, correct?
That is what the table says.
And music studio, same. So now he's going to have $850 for the zone change and he's going to have another $2,000 on top of it. That be a fair statement? So every time this gentleman wants to try and do something, it's another $1,000 for him to do it. This property, when it was, when the UDC was put into effect, these buildings were there from our packet, is that correct? So here we are putting a hardship on this gentleman to be able to, I guess, have control over his property. And each time we want to do it, we're wanting exact another $1,000 from him for when he wants to change something. I just, I don't get it. To me, if GB gets him where he needs to be, which it looks like everything, restaurant, music studio, event center is by right. And then office warehouse is already existing, so we can't make him tear it down and rebuild it, that's the right way to go. That's, so I'm in favor of GB.
Good statement. Any other questions, comments? So before we close the public hearing and move to the next piece of it, I'm going to ask Mr. Cheveria to put it on the table. But so I'm hearing a couple people say that GB is preferred and, and okay. It will take all six of you to, to do it because it takes a super majority with Mr. Tooman out tonight. It'll take all six. I'd rather go that route and, because I, I agree. It, it, we've got general business all over town, so why are we afraid of general business? I, I'm not, I'm not getting it and especially if he's already said, I'm not going to do office warehouse on the backside of it. That eliminates the, the issue.
He wouldn't be able to, it's non-permitting.
Right, and this is, in, in previous workshop tonight, it's one of the reasons why I said maybe our mixed uses categories around town that we've done, again, this was annexed in probably '05, '06, somewhere in there. You had a lot of things that were coexisting and so the Cullen mixed use area was, was put into place, so those could be compatible moving forward, but as we've seen things grow up around it, it's maturing more, so.
And I would like to add on to that, if we shoot it down, it's going to cost a man another 850 to $1,000.
I know, and, and so I, I, I would, I would agree that the GB is there, but before we do that, I wanted to make sure that you see in front of you, a GB will take a super majority vote, so.
My, my question is, is for the rest of council, and can we bring the satellite of the area back up? Not the zoning, but the actual live map. So can you move it left just a little bit? Sorry, right? You're good. So at our last council meeting, 500 feet away, we had the, that development that we told them to go into a plan development deal because they wanted to do office warehouse and they wanted GC and we said no, and they've come to us multiple times. So my question is, what's, what's the difference in this scenario versus the one right down the street, less than two blocks away? Is, is it because the zoning is R12 versus?
This is a different.
I know, what I'm saying is, is at Adamo and McCard.
That, that's almost, almost a mile away.
Adamo was going to be a build or rent community.
Now, he's talking about the warehouse, the general.
That's, that's a fight and.
Yeah, that's, that's a mile, mile away.
That's the, okay, I've got my projects missed. That's why, that's why I said, I got a question for you guys. What's the difference? That's the difference.
Yeah.
Okay, so the one that was down the street was the high density residential. Okay, thank you, that's the clarity. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mayor Cole, if I may. So just real quick, in the, in the presentation, the future land use plan designates this as a mixed use center, which allows for retail and commercial. And so while staff is not supportive of the GC request, staff is supportive of the GB request. That's just not what came in.
That's fair. Fair statement. Last call for questions, comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we'll move to new business item number one. Cheverie, if you'd put it on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-269, so moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. And it's on there as GC, so it would need to be amended to GB.
I'm going to motion to change, to amend this to the GB zone instead of the GC.
Second.
We have a motion to amend, to amend this to general business versus GC. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we are voting on the motion to amend.
Mayor Potem Carbone.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Member Chaviria.
Aye.
Member Byram.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, so we now have an amended motion on the table for consideration. Last call for questions, comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Chaviria.
Aye.
Member Byram.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, good deal. We wish you well. That's the first vote. Be back in two weeks, we'll get the second vote. All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to public hearing number two. Martin and Vance, I guess we're both staff and applicant on this one.
Yes, sir. So this second public hearing, this is a request by the Director of Community Development of the City of Pearland for approval of a permanent zone classification for the land previously within Brazoria County Municipal Utility District number 16 as follows. A general business district for newly annexed tracts of land as described in the following Platts, Pearland Asian Town, Oak Square subdivision and reserves B, C and Oak Road within Avalon Terrace, section one, within 270 feet of Broadway Street. B, single family residential three, R3 district for newly annexed tract of land as described in the following Platts, Avalon Terrace, section one, excluding reserves B, C and Oak Road within 270 feet of Broadway Street. Avalon Terrace, section two, Avalon Terrace, section three, Avalon Terrace, section four, Avalon Terrace, section five, Avalon Terrace, section six, and City of Pearland Sports Complex. C, suburban residential 12, SR12 district for newly annexed tracts of land as described in the following plat, Lakeside Estates, section one. And D, suburban development district for all areas excluded in Platts and areas stated above, generally located north of Broadway Street, west of Reed Boulevard, east of Stone Road and south of the northern boundary of Lakeside Estates, section one, with the exclusion of 2350 Reed Boulevard. So as mentioned, purpose of this is to assign zoning for properties that were recently annexed that were included in MUD 16. Section 2.3.4.1 outlines the process for zoning following annexation and allows up to 180 days for zoning to be assigned from the date of annexation. In the public comments, we had one person in support and then one came out for more information. And then this is a general look at the area, surrounding uses are residence, mixture of non-residential uses and some undeveloped properties. And then taking a look at the future land use map, we have a wide variety and diversity of future land use and place types within the area and surrounding. And then for those of us who deal better in a graphical representation rather than me rambling through all of the variety of subdivisions, this is what we're looking at for the proposed classifications. General business generally along Broadway, backing up to R3, suburban development is in the, the drainage pond and then some more R3 as you get back into the residences and the sportsplex and then the suburban residential 12. And I'll break these down briefly here in the following slides. So general business was recommended for this area in the front. Previously, there was a development agreement that identified these areas also as general business. You may have noticed that we included the areas that were in the landscape reserves within Avalon Terrace. That's just to make it unified and easier for development regulations as the property ages and moves forward. The R3 areas were assigned to the existing single family subdivisions, predominantly are in 60 foot wide lots, which match with the R3 and are consistent with the traditional residential place type. The sportsplex also in R3 is a permitted use under public or municipal park and is consistent with the parks and open space place type. Going to the very top of the MUD 16 area, this area is more along those 12,000 square foot lots and meets the existing rural residential place type. And then last was the area that was left kind of unzoned as suburban development. These areas were already developed as the neighborhood's detention area and are thus not going to have any development to them, so suburban development is fitting for those areas. One last look at the overall map here. And then getting to our analysis, the proposed permanent zone classifications as presented provide the best fit for the subject land based on the existing uses of those pieces of land and the surrounding areas and also fitting within the context of the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. Staff recommended approval of all of these classifications and then the planning and zoning commission recommended six to zero for all of these recommendations. That, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right, sounds good. Since we are also the applicant, we'll move straight to the public portion. Those speaking, those wishing to, to offer testimony for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record and have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, calling on those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, open it up to questions from council.
Martin, I noticed the package had like 10, 12 pages of all the applicant, I guess, all the people impacted that you sent this notice to, correct? Martin, I noticed that the package had like 10, 12 pages of all the applicant, I guess, all the people impacted that you sent this notice to, correct? When, when was that notice sent? I'm just curious. Because we're earlier talking about 200 feet, right? I mean, I get it, this is a little bit of a different circumstance. But out of 200 people, I mean, I, all those notices you sent, I, I guess, a couple of hundred notices probably?
Easily.
You got any response from any of them? I know you said one, right?
Going, going back to the, I mean, this is a very evident of how well.
That, that was my point. Thank you.
And they, and, and obviously, this went out before the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing as well, so, like, three, three and a half weeks ago. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Coza?
There was one comment in there about Oak Road, something, one of the folks that responded, something about Oak Road. What was, what were they trying to accomplish, or what did they want?
Was on the other side of?
Oak Road's on the south. It comes through the south right there. I mean, I'm assuming that's Oak Road. It's south of 518, and I guess on the north side, it's Oak Road.
It goes into that apartment.
Yeah. And that's, I didn't understand the comment when they said something about Oak Road.
I know the HOA has not wanted a commercial development tie-in.
Is that what it was? I, I couldn't understand. I was like, do they want it, do they not? It was.
So, previously, this property owner has already worked a negotiation out with the HOA to be able to have access onto Oak Road. The property under development on this side did not get access. They didn't have that same negotiation. Or weren't as successful, I should say. So, that is likely what they were discussing about was the provided access along Oak Road and managing the amount of traffic that would come onto that.
Okay, so, you're saying if something gets developed west of, I mean, I assume there's not a road there now?
Oak Road is the only road there.
What was that again?
So, so that's going to be where Asian Town goes? And, yes, sir?
Oak is there now.
Oak is there, okay. So, yes, they're not going to be able to, be able to have their development come out onto Oak Road, is what I'm hearing.
No, they will not.
The, the piece on the west would, piece on the east would.
Correct. Okay. Yeah, the HOA owns a strip on each side, and so you have to go through their strip to get there.
Okay. Well, no, that, that's what I, I was just trying to understand. I didn't quite grasp if the road's already there, what's, what's the issue? But now, now you clarify that. And then in the middle of the piece, well, I guess of all the property we're talking about here, is 2350 Reed Boulevard. Is that piece, it's a little notched area on the, right there? Yeah. Is that already in the city? Is it? So, we annexed everything, and that little piece of property will be outside city limits in the ETJ?
So, this piece of property was not a part of MUD 16, which is why it was not annexed.
Okay. And it is still outside the city of Pearland?
Correct.
Thank you.
I don't even know if that classifies as a donut hole.
When I saw that notch out, I'm like, is it part of the city or is it not?
Like a pinhole. Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, would you present that, please? Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-270, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had staff explanation as well as opportunity for questions, comments. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavedia?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
With that, we'll move to new business item number three. Mr. Byram, would you present that, please?
Consideration impossible action resolution R-2025-53, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you want to kick it off?
Sure, I can kick it off. Thank you, Mayor. So, this is an item, a resolution basically expressing opposition to Senate Bill 2722 and House Bill 5177. Those are companion bills in the Texas Legislature. What those do is, they basically dictate that the Harris County Toll Road Authority will send basically 30% of its surplus revenues to the city of Houston for law enforcement and emergency assistance services. And then the remaining 70% will be allocated on a pro-rata basis throughout Harris County. What they currently do is that they, those excess revenues, the precincts are available to allocate those to any city through partnering projects or projects they select themselves to, to help with transportation and connectivity. And so, we've actually been the recipient of two of those through Precinct 2 for the Hughes Road expansion between Pearland Parkway and the city limits to the northeast, and then for the Clear Creek Regional Trail system. So, Harris County is in opposition to this. They've asked for support from some of the, the surrounding suburban cities that, that do benefit from this. And those transportation improvements are needed within those different areas as opposed to the state legislature basically preempting all that and saying that 30% of that all goes to the city of Houston. Mayor, any other details I missed?
Yeah, just, you know, currently, for example, each county commissioner can decide how they want to use those surplus funds. And this is after their debt service, after maintenance, after Harris County Toll Road Authority has its own policing even out there. So, they're going to pay the city of Houston on top of that for additional policing. I, I, that, what this is, at the end of the day, is the legislature's trying to say, hey, Harris County, help, help, help plug the gaps in city of Houston's budget. And it, it's, that state should stay out of this. And each county commissioner can do their own thing in their particular area. And I'll give you an example where city of Houston benefits. Tom Ramsey, Commissioner Ramsey, has spoken to the mayor and has said, look, on roads in, in my precinct in the county that's in the city of Houston, we'll go do 50/50, and we'll do, we'll do road projects, and we'll, we'll go to town. And he's going to use that surplus funds in his, it's coming to his precinct to do that. The city of Houston's going to benefit. May not go directly here, but it's going to go over here. And we all know, dollar here versus a dollar here, it's a dollar coming in, and it's going to help. And so, this directly puts this type of program where we've gotten used road and some, some trail projects at jeopardy. Those, those won't happen at all. They, they just won't have the dollars to do it. So, not only are we opposed, we'd, we'd like to oppose this, but all of the Pasadena Deer Park and the like are all opposing it because they've all had great conversations with the commissioner, and, and he's willing to partner on projects.
How many, how many times have we seen on Facebook or emails where Dixie Farm, we get hit up for Dixie Farm being rough? This is a perfect.
And, and in fact, that's one that I want to talk to the commissioner about. Hey, we're opposing something that you've asked us to do. Would you get out there and fix Dixie Farm Road? I mean, it's all in the county. It's not our project to do, but.
It's scarred still.
But it's, it's going to, it's going to further hinder projects like that to, to making, you know, making it happen.
On page four of the, I guess it's the resolution, it does say, in section two, it says Speaker of the House, Dade Phelan, he's no longer the speaker.
Yeah, we caught that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, there's a corrected version that will be used for execution. That, that's more of a Scribner's error that can. Thank you for bringing it up.
The letter we did has Dustin Burrows on it.
So, Mayor, you know, I, I wasn't really sure what this was about, so I was obviously reading. And I know there's some in-depth conversation going on with what Ben Court put out there, I guess, regarding this and why he's doing it. I guess there's both sides to this story, right? One of them, and I, and again, you can educate me on this because this is not my cup of tea. It said that basically there's no accountability where, where this money goes. There's no audit being done. Also, part of it is, I guess, when you look at the voters, this was supposed to be paying off the debt. Toll Road, hell, you know, in 288, the toll will cost you an arm going into town and the other arm coming back. So, I guess the question is, what was the intent when they passed the toll, right? When the voters voted for it? And from my understanding, it was to pay off the debt eventually, only to OME. And I guess the revenues these tolls are generating are much greater than they anticipated. And so, part of the problem is everybody's trying to grab a piece of that toll and the revenues that's generating. So, you know, this is not an easy, I mean, I guess Pearland benefits from it. But at the end of the day, I think taxpayers should get their money back. You know, I would love to see where the money goes back to paying off the debt and making these tolls where just the OME is allowed and no surplus. Really, I mean, you know, I think people are tired of just being constantly taxed, and fees are taxed, end of the day. And so, I'm having a hard time, and I'm struggling with this, right? Resolution to say, I get that we're benefiting, we may have gotten two projects out of this, but we had to subsidize it also. Will we have done the trails? Probably not. We probably would not have done the trails if we didn't get this money. Is it trails, to me, is it cost benefit? Probably not. I don't think the money we're spending on the trail is really benefiting dollar-for-dollar from the taxpayers. That, probably not enough users. So, you know, for me, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I think we need, before you sign this resolution, I think we need to kind of look at the pros and cons because this is like really one-sided. And I think there's a much in-depth, I guess, discussion we should have than just agreeing to a resolution.
Well, let me, I, I'll respond to that. The, the, the resolution that the state legislature is asking for is, is not doing what you're asking for. It's not paying off the debt and collapsing the toll road system. It's, it's diverting money to the city of Houston. And do we want to talk about an entity that doesn't know where its dollars are going? So, let's just go and put more money into the city of Houston where we don't know what's going. Joel, we have projects with Harris County Precinct 2. They say it's not being audited, but yet, what do we have to do with these partnering projects to show how the money's being spent?
So, good question, Mayor. I mean, we're engaged in ongoing discussions with the precinct about the progress of the projects and are kind of integrated in the design implementation. We have an inter-local agreement. And as you know, we are audited, you know, by an independent auditor, as is the county. So, I think the program that we're speaking of does have some accountability because it's a publicly, you know, regarded competitive initiative, and the paper trail is there for the applications, you know, the outcomes as far as the awards. I mean, I think it's a, a very transparent program. And as you expressed, the concern is taking 30% away to give to the Houston Police Department is, is where there's also an accountability.
And, and, Mr. Michelle, back to your original, you know, point. If, if, if Senator Ben Court and the House version had put a bill that we're going to, you know, we're going to force Harris County Toll Road Authority to direct all surplus back into paying their debt off, it might be a completely different story, but they're not even doing what, what you would like to see done. We should oppose it just the sheer fact that they don't want to do that. So, you know, at the end of the day, the way this program has worked for years and years in Harris County is the surplus funds go back, have, have always gone back to transportation-related projects in and around the toll road system. Connectivity, roads that the normal taxpayer, the, the property taxpayer are paying for. So, millions and millions of dollars have gone back in where the, the property taxpayer didn't pay that, didn't pay that toll. And here in Pearland, we have, I mean, you're probably a toll user, I'm a toll user. And here we are getting dollars back into the city of Houston that are, that are generated from our tolls that our taxpayers will benefit. It, it's not to the extent that Harris County and some of the larger users, but even the two projects, it's worth $9 million back to the city, and that's benefiting our taxpayers that use the toll system. So, that's why, you know, I, I, I think it's important. And then, beyond all of that, if we truly believe in local control, why is the legislature stepping in and dictating? Let the locals control their, their destiny. I get your point, and, and I do agree with your point. You've got entities out there that they've, they've had a hard time or, or lack of transparency. I get that. But here the legislature's not even saying, make it transparent. They're just saying, give the city of Houston 30% of your surplus. I just don't, if that was us, we would be fighting that bill. So, that's why it's offered up to, as a resolution of opposition. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Member Patel, I agree with a lot of what you just said, I think. And I would be in favor of opposing this because I don't trust the city of Houston with more money. I think we can use it better. But I'd love to work with you, to work with our legislators on looking at how do we eliminate a lot of this debt that was supposed to be eliminated in the first place? If the legislature's going to weigh in on it, then let's encourage them to weigh in on it in a way that we like. That's my comment on it.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavedia?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
All right. With that, there were no more mayor council issues from the council discussion. With that, we'll move to executive session. Under Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations will recess at 7:55.
Let's return from executive session at 8:39. We'll move to adjournment at 8:39.